Thank you. It's 6:30, so go ahead and get started. I called to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for January 11th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. That still sounds so weird, 2022. Per the Governor's Executive Order 20-16 regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws, the city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. Because of the surge in COVID numbers, the city council meeting will be conducted using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be shown as panelists and those watching the meeting will be attendees. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. Tonight, we will start with the swearing-in of our two new police officers, Kayden Crotchet and Matthew Pavy, followed by the consent agenda, which includes approval of the November bank balances, budget report for periods ending November 30th, 2021, approval of the November check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for December 2021, and normally, we would include the previous month's minutes. However, the December 14th, 2021, meeting minutes were not transcribed in time and will be added to the February 8th, 2022 agenda. Our regular meeting agenda includes a public hearing for planning application Z0483-21-C, requesting to modify the conditions of approval for the proposed preschool and daycare facility at the Hillside Christian Church, the 2021 year-end review, and 2022 annual work plan, appointments to the city commissions, boards, and committees for 2022, specifically traffic safety in the senior center advisory board, and the city administrator employment contract. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Here.
Counselor Hartman?
Here.
Counselor Todd? Counselor Garlington?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. Thank you. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So tonight, we're going to start with a presentation, which will be the swearing-in of our two new police officers. Chief Schmarber?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for this opportunity to swearing-in for two police officers. They will be rigorous testing. Sorry, I'm going to call the council to speak. Rigorous testing to... rigorous testing to get to where they're at today, and this is just the start of their career. First, I would like to introduce you, Kayden Crotchet. Kayden, can you please come up? Kayden was born and raised in Hillsborough, Oregon, and graduated from Hillsborough High School. Kayden attended Ohio State University, where he graduated with a BA in criminology and criminal justice studies. Kayden's hobbies are hiking, camping, traveling, and fencing. Kayden has been fencing since he was nine years old and competed at fencing at Ohio State, earning the Ohio State Scholar-Athlete Award. Mr. Matthew Pavy, can you come up? Can you hear me okay? Thank you. Matthew graduated from Oregon City High School and was a cadet with the Milwaukee Police Department prior to joining GPD. While preparing for law enforcement position, Matthew was employed by Target as a loss prevention officer, where he increased his skills in communication engagement and report writing. Matthew's hobbies include cars and snowmobile, or excuse me, snowboarding. So, we are very fortunate to have both these individuals here at Gladstone Police Department, and we look forward to the future of their careers here. Right now, I would like to ask Judge Amy Lindgren to provide the oath of office.
I think we'll do them individually, yes.
So, you can follow along on that one? Did you turn on this microphone? Okay. Want to, can we be seen on the video? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, Matthew Pavy. Hold on, wait, you don't look like... Okay. Hi, Kayden Crotchet.
Hi, Kayden Crotchet.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code.
And the Charter and Municipal Code.
Of the city of Gladstone.
Of the city of Gladstone.
And that I will...
And that I will...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
For the city of Gladstone, Oregon.
For the city of Gladstone, Oregon.
During my entire term of employment.
During my entire term of employment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You're welcome aboard. Time to leave. Raise your right hand. Hi, Matthew Pavy.
Hi, Matthew Pavy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Oregon.
And the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and Municipal Code.
And the Charter and Municipal Code.
Of the city of Gladstone.
Of the city of Gladstone.
And that I will...
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of police officer for the city of Gladstone, Oregon.
Of police officer for the city of Gladstone, Oregon.
During my entire term of employment.
During my entire term of employment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome aboard. Well, thank you, and welcome to Gladstone. I think we're all applauding that you chose Gladstone. It is your home. Hopefully, you'll love it as much as we do.
Thank you.
If there's anything we can do for you, let us know. Anybody want to say anything, councilors? Nope, just congratulations.
Mayor, if you can indulge me just for about three more minutes, we'll have a badge-pinning ceremony real quick. This is tradition for law enforcement. So, right now, what we do have here, and this is... And it's hard because I've got to stand next to this mic, so I apologize. But this is for those who don't know, the symbol of the badge, it's very important. Can you guys hear me okay? The symbol of the badge is very important, and what the meaning of the badge. The badge is a symbol of sacrifice, duty, service, representing honor, authority. The badge is presented and displayed to indicate a special accomplishment, symbol of authority granted by taking the oath of office, which they just took. It's also a symbol of dedication, hard work, commitment to community served. It's a commitment to our core values. In Gladstone, we have four core values that are very, very important to us. And this is what this badge means, is what you'll be held accountable for. That is, respect, respect our oath, legitimacy, our community, and accountability. Character, to be honest and demonstrate moral and ethical principles to remain true to our values and be authentic. Service, to be professional at all times. Value all, compassion for those we serve, and utilize best practices, training, and education. And finally, passion. And this is unique to a majority of values in law enforcement, but passion to represent the city and community honorably. Passion towards teamwork and a passion to be the best in our profession. As such, it's important to have only the very best wear the Gladstone Police Department badge, and you were selected. So here's your opportunity. Here's your opportunity to succeed. Here's your opportunity to thrive in a wonderful and great supporting community. So take advantage, and you have a lot of people in this room that will support you, including me. We'll give you everything you need to be very successful at this job. Okay? And for those who don't know, and I neglected to introduce our city administrator, Jackie Betts. She's standing right there. Jackie Betts is our city administrator, and she's an absolute fabulous administrator, very supportive of everything we're doing right now, in line with city goals and values. So right now, Kayden? Who would you like to pin on your badge?
My mother.
Come on up. This is the only time if you want to focus.
That's all right.
There we go.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's crush it. Good job. Have to come on up. Mayor, City Council, congratulations to two new police officers. Thank you very much for your time.
Again, welcome to Gladstone. All right, we'll move on. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, if you can wait for just a moment.
Yeah, Jackie's got to run back to her office. Hold on. Okay. Jackie says there are no agenda additions or corrections. So next is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions, concerns? Counselor Alexander?
None.
Counselor Hartman?
None for me.
Counselor Garlington?
None for me.
Counselor Todd?
No, thank you.
Counselor Ripley?
Uh, no.
Counselor Tracy?
None, thank you, Mayor.
Well, then I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
I second.
Okay, we got it. All right. Motion was made by Counselor Garlington and seconded by Councilors Todd and Alexander to accept, to approve the consent agenda. Any additional questions or concerns? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes, consent agenda has been passed. Do we have any correspondence?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so just one thing before we start, and that's for the folks that have signed up to speak. The deadline to accept comments was noon today, and as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment. So, we're going to start with something which is unusual for this council, and that is a public hearing for a planning commission application. Item six, application Z0483-21-C, which is a request to modify the conditions of approval for the proposed, for a proposed preschool and daycare facility. So bear with me, this is a legal thing, and there's quite a bit that has to be said. It's been a while since I've done this. Because this is a quasi-judicial decision appealed from the planning commission, there's very specific legal process that needs to be followed. To begin with, there will be time limits on the presentation and those testifying. There will be 15 minutes allowed for the applicant's presentation, three minutes for each audience member testifying in favor, against, or neutral. There will then be five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. I open the public hearing for file number Z0483-21-C, a request to modify the conditions of approval for the proposed preschool and daycare facility at the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church. The time is 6:46 PM. Are there any abstentions from this hearing body? Meaning, are there any councilors that wish to abstain from this discussion? I don't see any. Are there any conflicts of interest from this hearing body? I don't see any. Is there any ex parte conflict that needs to be stated, which would include site visits? So I'm going to poll you on this one instead of just a shake of the head. Greg, do you have any ex parte conflict that you'd like to state?
No, I do not.
Counselor Hartman?
I've only driven by the site, but I've never been onsite or been inside the building, but I have driven by it.
Thank you. Counselor Garlington?
I have been by the site. I have not been inside or on the property.
Thank you. Counselor Todd?
No ex parte contact, but I did drive by how many times and also drove through the parking lot. I've never been inside.
All right, Counselor Ripley?
I have never driven by or been inside.
That's an easy one. Counselor Tracy?
No ex parte contact.
All right, and I have not been inside the church other than a couple months ago, and I do volunteer once a week at the food pantry, which is in the portables behind the church. So that's my involvement there. To bring a challenge via the Zoom platform, you need to click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, you want to dial *9 to raise your hand, again at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Are there any other challenges to any individual hearing this application appeal? Tammy, is there anyone that's raised their hand?
I do not see any hands raised.
All right, then I'm assuming that there are no additional challenges. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any party the right to request a continuance of this hearing or ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals, which is referred to as LUBA, based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue recludes an action for damages in circuit court. So I just want to confirm with Chad that that is covering all of the bases, correct? Correct. All right, staff report, please. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm going to ask our senior planner, Joy Fields, to walk you through the staff report for this application.
Good evening. This evening, we will be going through the slideshow that was given to the planning commission in November. There is one modification that will draw your attention to when we get to it, and it is an aerial image of the site that has dimensional standards over the grassy area where the proposed outdoor play area would be. Is everyone able to hear me okay?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Great. So, we are here tonight to look at the application for changing the use at Hillside Christian Fellowship, located at 6460 Glen Echo Avenue in Gladstone, Oregon. The change of use would be to include the use of a daycare and a preschool in the existing church during the weekdays. To do this, we will be looking at the conditional use criteria in the Gladstone Municipal Code and discussing next steps. The proposed project is for a conditional use to allow a daycare and preschool in the existing church building with a total of about 50 students. The building is located on the map here with the yellow star. It is on Glen Echo between Portland Avenue and Oakfield Road. It is just northeast of Tryon Way. The property is zone R 7.2. That is a single-family residential zoning district that identifies both preschools and daycares as a conditional use. The property is about two acres in size, and there are no environmental overlays that we are aware of on the site. The floor plan that you see on the screen was part of the application that was submitted. It shows an indoor recreational space proposed as well as classrooms to be used for the daycare use. Property owners located within 250 feet of the subject property received notice of the application. And the Gladstone departments, including Public Works, Engineering, Fire, Police Department, they all received notice of this application. The Gladstone Public Works Department managed the comments for both the Public Works Department and the Engineering Department, and they were provided to the planning commission on the 15th of November. As I mentioned, the uses that are proposed in this application are identified in section 17.10 of the Gladstone Municipal Code. Church and associated buildings and structures, community centers and daycare centers, schools and associated buildings, including nursery schools, otherwise known as preschools, are identified as conditional uses in this zoning district. For other uses that are not residential, the dimensional standards in the R 7.2 zoning district include that the lots have to be at least 7,200 square feet or as identified by the special use section of the Gladstone Municipal Code. As I mentioned, it is a two-acre site with a driveway to the south and a driveway to the north, and a parking lot that wraps around two sides of the building. The rear of the property has mobile units and trees. The front part of the property is predominantly grass. And the location and size of the school building is not proposed to change. Therefore, this existing structure that is there now is not intended to change with the new use. This structure has been used as a church for about 50 years. It previously had approval through a conditional use application to be a school that served about 300 students. That approval, however, is not no longer valid because the property was reduced in size from four and a half acres to only two acres. And the conditional use for the approval in 2007 included sidewalks, and they were not built. And so, the conditions of approval and the conditional use is no longer valid. So the applicant had to come through and do a new conditional use application for this change of use, since it has not been used as a school since the property was modified. Circumstances for granting a conditional use that have to be considered is whether it's timely, whether there is adequate transportation systems, public facilities, and services to serve either as they are now or as they will be planned for the area. Because this building and structure has had similar use in the past with additional students, it is anticipated that the facilities are adequate. However, to ensure that they are in good repair and are large enough, special conditions of approval were included to ensure that they remain adequate. The location, size, and functional characteristics of the proposal are such that it can be made reasonably compatible and have minimal impact on the livability of the area. Because this site has been used as a church for many, many years and previously as a school, it is not anticipated that there will be any negative impact by this use, especially with the screening and modifications to the direction of traffic that was proposed in the application. Circumstances for granting includes satisfying the policies of the comprehensive plan that apply to the proposed use. And it is identified that daycare centers and community centers should be located at or near the intersection of minor arterials and collectors. This site is located on Glen Echo Avenue, not far from Portland Avenue. It's about 1,000 feet from Portland Avenue and Oakfield. And so, it is near the intersection of minor arterials and collectors. So it satisfies that. It is identified in the 2017 Transportation System Plan as a location for sidewalks for the pedestrian plan projects. Glen Echo between Portland Avenue and Oakfield is identified in green here. And as I mentioned, there are special standards that apply to uses such as nursery schools and daycares. And one of the standards that applies is that nursery schools shall provide and maintain at least 100 square feet of outdoor play area per child. And a sight-obscuring fence at least four feet, but no more than six feet in height, shall separate the play area from a budding lots. And in the application, the play area identified by the applicant... In the application, the play area identified by the applicant was not as large as the yellow square that you see. It included the area that I am outlining with my cursor. I hope you can all see that, just adjacent to the building. To meet the outdoor play area required for nursery schools, the outdoor play area has to be at least three thousand square feet. Doing a quick measurement with tools that I have available from my desk, it appears that there is enough grass area to serve the three thousand square feet requirement for the number of students served by the nursery school. The reason that it does not extend closer towards the road is the Gladstone Municipal Code limits fences between the main line of the building and the road to a height of three feet. And so, the play area has to start at or behind the main line of the building to meet the four-foot height requirement of the fence. Therefore, it's not anticipated that the play area would be in front of the church because it has to be adjacent to or on the side. The daycare center has no dimensional standards, but it does have the, the requirement of being in an appropriate location. Circumstances for granting conditional uses include specific requirements that are found necessary to protect, protect the best interests of the surrounding area or the city as a whole. And there is a list contained within the Gladstone Municipal Code on those conditions. But the conditions of approval for a conditional use application are not limited to those identified in the code. And those uses or those conditions include limiting the hours, days, place or manner of the operation, requiring design features, in requiring increased setbacks and lot coverage, limiting the building height or size. As I mentioned, the building is not proposed to be altered as far as height or size or lot coverage. And so, you will see these, these conditions of approval are reasonable in circumstances where a use is anticipated to create more traffic noise and lights than a single-family home. As the mayor noted earlier, the applicant appealed the Planning Commission's approval because of the requirements for sidewalks and stormwater easement near the rear of the property. Sidewalks are considered street improvements and they are identified as one of those conditions of approval that can be placed on a conditional use application. Additionally, requiring landscaping, screening, drainage and surfacing of parking lots is another condition that can be approved. And the, the special condition of approval to include a fifteen-foot easement could address the drainage, but it could also ensure that the existing public facilities were up to the city standards. City standards include a fifteen-foot easement around stormwater infrastructure to ensure that future maintenance can take place. As such, staff recommended and Planning Commission considered and modified based on public testimony, the special conditions of approval and approved the change of use and the conditional use of the Hillside Church to include a daycare and nursery school with appropriate landscaping to ensure that the properties that may get glare from any, any traffic would be screened from landscaping. If there's a modification to the sign, they will need a sign permit. Lighting to ensure that any light on the site does not go onto adjacent residential structures. ADA access, sidewalks, water and sanitary improvements if needed. And the easements to ensure that any improvements to the water or sanitary sewer or the existing stormwater infrastructure were within easements that would allow for future access. The outdoor play area was also one of those conditions of approval because it needed to be increased from what was proposed to meet the special conditions for a nursery school. And the applicant had no concerns about these, but did raise an issue about the stormwater easement and the sidewalks. And with that, I conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time or wait until after the applicant has presented and you hear from others.
Mayor, you're muted.
That would make a difference. I think we'll go ahead and have council ask questions first of Ms. Fields just since there's a lot of information there and want to make sure that, that we get our questions answered. Counselor Alexander, any questions or concerns?
Lot of information there, a lot of good information. My concern is anytime we're dealing with any of our use, any of our use, I want, I want all the full protections we can give them. Fences, sidewalks, everything. I think they need to be watched out and protected in every aspect we can afford. So, that's my thought on that. Thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Are, are we asking questions specific to Ms. Fields? Or are we, would you like to know what auction we would like to go forward with?
No, just, just ask questions related to her presentation.
Okay. Um, let me look my notes. I don't think I have any questions specific to you, but thank you so much for the presentation.
Counselor Todd.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I've been really trying to visualize what this stormwater easement looks like, where it is, give me a little overview of that, and then I have one more question, so.
So, stormwater easements usually follow the stormwater infrastructure. And that is not my department of expertise. And so, there is no, it is my understanding that there is no record of an easement currently for the existing stormwater infrastructure. And so, I'm sure the Public Works Department would work with applicant to locate the, the stormwater infrastructure that exists and to help determine where that easement should be. The reason it was slightly vague was because I don't know how to describe where it would be. But I see that the Public Works Director is on the screen and Darren may be able to assist you with answering that.
So, if you're answering, Darren, if you're answering that question, could, could you clarify what an easement is and how limiting an easement is for the property owners?
Yeah, so, an easement is basically just the, the area of land in which, in this case, stormlines go through a property. We need to be able to access those in certain, certain situations. This, this property has a stormline that runs through the back of the property down. It runs from the cul-de-sac or I think it's gets court all the way through their property down to Tryon Way that runs through the back of their property. That's the easement that we're referring to in this situation.
And I believe that you cannot build on top of an easement. Is that correct?
That is correct. You're not supposed to be able to build on top of it or construct anything that would hinder us accessing that, in this case, stormline.
Would that include a parking lot?
That would not include a parking lot, but what everybody needs to understand is if we need to go in and make a repair, we would tear up said parking lot and, you know, to make our repair and, and go forward with it that way.
And this is in the back where the parking lot is, or is it behind the portables?
It, it's actually right on the edge of the parking lot, before the portables edge of parking lot. If you did a fifteen-foot easement, it would stretch out into the parking lot a little bit into it.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Todd?
Yeah, that, that does answer that question. I did have another question for Hunter Fields. Did, I was trying to understand if what I heard, that's what I heard, previously when it was Grace Christian Church and School, there were sidewalks that were supposed to be required to be done by two thousand and seven and they weren't?
There was a conditional use approval to expand the school. And I, I just have the conditional use approval from that time and it included sidewalks. And looking at the aerial image, I don't see any sidewalks. So, I, that was before my time, but it, it is in my communication with the applicant, I shared that because it was not implemented that as far as I could see and because the property size changed, they could not use that previous conditional use approval because the situation had changed.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for right now.
Thanks. Counselor Ripley.
I have no questions.
Counselor Tracy.
I don't have any further questions. I think Counselor Todd asked the questions that we've asked.
Counselor Garlington.
I just have a couple. So, is, on the stormwater drain, is the cleanout on their property or the cleanout is on another property for that line?
So, I have not looked at this personally to see exactly what structures are there. What RGIS system shows that there are at least two catch basins on that property that also drain to that stormline. So, we have the stormline, we have at least two structures being the, the catch basins and possibly a manhole that's involved.
Okay, so, asking for an easement, basically, we're asking them not to obscure your access to a cleanout, correct? Or, and/or a basin that might back up in some way?
We need to have access to everything that is incorporated with that stormline. They, they, the easement would still be there. They cannot build on top of that easement.
So, and, and Ms. Fields is, there is nothing there at this time except a partial parking lot, which is already there, and they don't have plans to build anything on top of it?
There is nothing proposed in the application to build anything on top of it. And it's my understanding that there is nothing built on it currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have a quick question. Do we know what, when, and I don't know if you can answer it, Joy, or some other resident of Gladstone. When Grace Christian was a school, what grades did it, that occupied that school? Was it lower, lower grades, full? What was it?
It was K through twelve ultimately at the end.
K through twelve, and you said there's about three hundred students?
Yeah, they could do three hundred. Usually, it was about a hundred and fifty is what I found from people.
And then on the sidewalk, I was on Planning Commission and my recollection is that the reason those weren't built is because the city was looking at a full sidewalk project on Glen Echo. And so, they were hoping that that was going to be sooner rather than later. So, I believe that was why it hadn't been done quite well, you know?
Well, thank you for that history.
Yeah. So, I don't think I have questions other than going through this. It sure makes me think that we need to relook at our codes and ordinances closely because there's a lot of things on here that just don't make much sense, but that's all right. So, anything else for staff before we go into the applicant's presentation? I don't see anything. So, do we have the applicants online that can tell us their side of this and what their intentions are? Or is?
I had a David, oh, hang on, David Morris, I'm going to promote him. He is the applicant.
I am still here. I'm just turning off my video to ensure that my internet remains stable.
Good evening, Mayor Stempel and council members, and Joy, good to see you as well. Thank you, first of all, for hearing the appeal. I'd like to first state that the appeal for the easements was due to really the vagueness and not knowing what was being asked. Hearing Darren share what he shared, yes, there are two collection basins. It spans from the, really the west or the east side of the property about midway in the property to the southeast or southwest corner of the parking lot. Joy, as you saw the, the drawing and others as you saw that. So, there is a collection basin on one side of the parking lot and then a collection basin on the, the southwest corner. The southwest corner does not have any construction on it. However, currently there, when we obtained the property, there were two Conex storage units there. And so, it would just be a matter of us relocating those so that the easement would be met. We just really needed to know what that was. And so, the clarification completely helps, makes it understandable and that, that enables us. And so, all of the, all of that stormwater drain, I believe, is covered by parking lot. I'm not certain, Darren, if on the west side of the property going south from that last catch basin, if it goes along that south property line or if it actually just crosses over maybe between two houses in the, in the developed property next to us.
From what I see on GIS, that is correct. It, it goes between the neighbors' properties out to, to Tryon from there.
Tryon, yeah. Okay, that's, I assume that, actually, I have a son who's a civil engineer, works for SISL Engineering right there in Gladstone, so that worked out well. Anyway, so, yeah, so, really, our wanting clarity on that would be that we can easily satisfy that without any difficulty whatsoever. And so, that, the, our, our really need for clarification, that's, that's what that appeal was for. The appeal for the sidewalks, before I address that, maybe just on the playground, let me mention this. Our heart's desire would be to have a large, the largest area possible that we could utilize for playground. And I think in what Joy outlined, we would be able to get up to thirty-five hundred square feet of playground. And we would really like to do that because we would want to maximize the community's ability to even utilize the playground on off-hours when, when there is no nursery up and running. And so, our goal is that the facilities would be a benefit to the community. Also, now coming to the sidewalks, I think, I think our biggest concern and probably the church that was previous to us that had the conditional use permit with sidewalks included and Mayor Stempel maybe indicated that what the history was, that there is a comprehensive plan for sidewalks. And as you go down Glen Echo and you see, there, there's only a few areas that have any sidewalks currently there. And we're, we're not opposed to having sidewalks. We actually believe that the, I think we initially in our conversations with Joy and Tom SISL's brother, I forget his first name, but we're that, we're not opposed to that. We also, as Councilmember Gray said, our concern is for the safety and well-being of all the children and any, any youngsters that would be on site. What we do recognize is there probably would be very little, if any, foot traffic in, in our current setting. And that's why we actually proposed, I think, the change in the plate, the change in the drop-off in terms of the directional of the parking lot so that there would be the ability for cars to line up and not have any traffic issues in the street. So, all of those things being So all of those things being said, we, in just doing a cursory look at what the cost associated with the civil engineering, as well as the sidewalk construction, it, it appears to be considerably cost prohibitive, especially the way I think it's even written, where it would be adjacent to the Tyrone project, where those sidewalks come in, it would literally take a portion of our frontage all along Glen Echo Road, which not only is that, I mean, it takes our front yard, it would actually run through where the existing sign is, and so we'd have to go through the permitting process against, excuse me, for signage, which we would like not to have to do. And so our, our thought is simply this, that if there is a comprehensive plan to have sidewalks up and down both sides of Glen Echo, so that at some point we could have Trimate buses running up and down the streets for convenience of transportation, we'd like to be included in that and not be, you know, putting in sidewalks for 170 linear feet. That would be delayed for any additional sidewalks adjacent. I, I mean, I look at our neighbor immediately to the west, and if the sidewalk was going to be adjacent, it takes a significant portion of his front yard. And I, I just can't see what that's going to look like. I would love to be a part of any of those conversations, but I just, what I'm looking at is a large expense for an organization, we're relatively young organization. We do not have a tremendous amount of asset, and so to add potentially $100,000 to what we're trying to do is provide a service for families within the community, and families that are already part of a church fellowship that is meeting there. It, there's a cost prohibitiveness to what we are looking at, and so safety, yes, we are 100%. I'm, I've been very active all throughout the North Clackamas School District. I've been active somewhat now, even in the Gladstone community, and I will tell you, our heartbeat is for the safety and protection of the kids and any foot traffic. However, it, it seems, it seems a bit excessive in terms of cost for something that we may not have sidewalks on either side for some period down line. And so I'm suggesting that we would love to, we would love to have sidewalks and be included in that at the time where we actually have sidewalks from Oak Grove all the way down to Portland Boulevard. And we would participate and love to be a part of all of what has been entailed there.
All right, questions from council, Counsel Alexander.
Yeah, going back to that then on the, so, so can you ensure that there be no children out on Glen Echo? You'd have them all picked up on the side, on either side or in the back of the building?
Correct, correct.
You can guarantee that? So, so as in order to not put the sidewalks there, is that? Because that's a safety thing, I believe, and, and I don't believe children should be out on that busy street without there being a sidewalk there.
So, so guarantee. Yes, again, I can't, I cannot speak for who may be attending our daycare preschool in terms of, there may be someone who lives right around the corner on Tyrone, that might decide they want to walk up the street. So I would like to say, yes, our plan would be to have no foot traffic in that regard, but there may be community folks.
They can walk around the property here.
I mean, they, yeah, theoretically, they could walk right onto the grass, grassy area that would be, you know, in front of the line of the building and where the playground area is, and so not on the road at Glen Echo. But I will tell you, we do have, we already have a tremendous amount of people that use the property for walking their dog. And they'll walk across the street, and oftentimes they have children with them. So I do see that on our property. And so I have seen kids that walk up our driveway, if you will, with a parent and an animal throwing a ball and using our back parking lot, which we love, we love. We want people to be on our property. But from the safety concern and the safety, the reason we wanted to change the pattern of the parking lot was so that we could ensure cars would have a long driveway in, be able to make the turn, and then a long driveway up the other side, so we could have as many as 25 to 30, maybe even 40 cars in a line, waiting to drop off kids, parents walking in and dropping off kids. And we would potentially have two drop-off points, which would make it easy, one covered area and one right next to a covered area in the entrance.
So there'd be no, no children out exposed to the Glen Echo street?
There should not be ever any children out exposed, unless, again, there was foot traffic dropping off and picking up.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Counsel Alexander, or excuse me, Counsel Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you do the favor and clarify the ages that you are planning to serve?
That's a great question. I think we are looking at the preschool age. I think in our proposal, we had from like six weeks all the way up through
Four years old.
Four years old, and there might be, there might be cause for, you know, four and a half, or even a five for some other reason, but typically, six weeks to four years old.
Thank you. And then the other question I had was, if we get to a resolution today, what is your ETA on opening?
Great question. I think initially, we would like to be able to move quickly. We do have a permit in paperwork that's now back from the county for some permitting on some of the work that we're doing. And it's, really, we have to, you know, make a couple adjustments, our architect is working on that right now. When we get that back, there's a little bit of work that we need to do, we have the entire playground area that we need to build. And there were a couple of items that's going to take us a little bit of time. I'd like to say that we would be able to open up in September of 2022. That would give us about nine months of time to do construction. I will say that we're doing everything we can to pay cash for everything we do, so that there is no burden put upon the congregation, if you will, in terms of overhead. And so from that perspective, unless we don't have the money to do the items that are on our list, that would delay, but we believe that it will be September through December, somewhere in that window this year.
And we have to get licensed.
And we're, and we're working on our licensing.
Thank you for those answers, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Todd.
Hi there, Pastor Morris, I was wondering, do you currently, what size of fellowship do you have for regular church services? This is just me being interested.
Great, thank you for that question. So we, we launched our campus there about four months ago, and we, we are running a regular attendance between 80 and probably 120.
Okay, okay, so you will all have services on, like, normal church services, this is just what will be happening there, you propose during the week, okay? And there was one other question. I think that's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Ripley.
I have no questions.
Counselor Tracy.
Thank you, Pastor. What's your total build-out, what was your total build-out budget for this project? Let's just take away the potential cost on the sidewalk. What did you guys budget for this? Do you mind telling us?
Yeah, I really don't mind. So a couple of things to keep in mind, though. We, we do have contract people that are doing the work, and they do it gratis. So what our budget is really represents materials in many cases. We have a group that's called, they're RV maps workers, and what they are are retired construction folks, they're retired folks that do faith-based community work. And so we are part of a network with the Assemblies of God that has this going on nationwide as well as globally. And so we have teams that will come in and do the work. And oftentimes, they'll post up with their RVs. We were working with our friends at the Seventh Day Adventist Camp, and they provided hookup for all of our RVers. And so our costs are minimal, because we have that team coming in. But we've, we've budgeted about $150,000 for all the work that is being done to date. We do have some modifications on the other end of the building that would not be included with the preschool daycare, church, and supplementary rooms for church on Sundays. So we are looking at about $150, $150,000. And we've, we've probably used upwards of $100,000. We did install air conditioning. And when we took over the property, it has seven furnaces on, on the, on the property. And we had to install three brand-new furnaces the day we took over possession. So a lot of the, a lot of the cost was eaten up in HVAC.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that you're, you're kind of at 150 realistic budget if you were all in on this. Maybe just a ballpark around 200, if you were paying for some of these services outside of the volunteer work?
I would, I would say our estimates on some of the work that is proposed would, would raise our cost probably up to a quarter of a million. And we do, we do have a secondary phase that we're already working on, and that's what's into the county for some proposed changes. You, you saw the diagram of the building, the, the rooms that were proposed, with the sanctuary being the play area, our chairs are mobile chairs, so we can stack chairs and move them and have an indoor play area for weather-related constraints. So the other side of the building, which is a section that is between the actual proposed daycare area and the parking lot, is we're making a number of modifications there that will likely be in the same neighborhood of $150,000.
Thank you for that, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Tracy.
Counsel Garlington.
I was going to ask about some of the costs, and Counselor Tracy handled that, so I'm good, thank you.
All right, all my questions have been answered, so unless the applicant has additional information, we could move into the public testimony phase. That's all right?
That's great, thank you.
All right, if you could stay on Pastor Morris, so that we have questions further on. All right, so now's the time for public testimony. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is acceptable to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that is all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to be considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your material to Tammy Bannick at b-a-n-n-i-c-k@ci.gladstone.or.us, and staff will make sure your evidence is properly taken care of. If you do not wish to speak but do still want to submit written testimony, you may also email those materials to Tammy Bannick. And we did receive an email testimony from Ms. Claire Coy, which the council has received, but she was unable to attend tonight. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you are participating via Zoom, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand, and do this at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. Now's the time for public testimony, and a reminder that you are allowed three minutes each. So let's begin with testimony in favor of the proposal. Tammy, do we have any speakers signed up?
I believe we have one that is in favor, and that's Sierra Cook.
All right, if you could bring her up, please.
Hi, council, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. I'm speaking tonight in support of modifying the conditions of approval for the proposed preschool and daycare facility at Hillside Christian Church. The childcare crisis in Oregon is such that all counties in Oregon are currently classified as childcare deserts. Throughout this pandemic, many parents, mostly women, are being forced to leave the workforce due to a lack of safe, affordable childcare. The ability of Hillside Christian Church to construct a $100,000 sidewalk should not stand in the way of getting Gladstone families access to quality, affordable childcare, especially considering the stated goal of this preschool and daycare to serve underserved families. Please vote to modify the conditions of approval for the proposed preschool and daycare.
Wonderful, thank you. Anybody else, Tammy?
I have another one with their name up, or with their hand up, and that is Gary Majors.
And you?
Hello?
Hi, am I able to hear me now? There we go. Okay, Gary Majors, just wanted to not want to repeat what's been said, but regarding the sidewalk, I've been a real estate broker for 35 years, been witness to a lot of requirements for new construction, where you have sidewalks built where there are no sidewalks adjoining them at all, for, in some cases, a half a mile on either side of the road. And so my question on the sidewalk would be, why is that required now? As opposed to later, when other sidewalks are being done? So in, in favor of accepting the modifications? And I just think that this is a much-needed daycare at this point, so.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Anybody else, Tammy?
I do not have any other hands up.
All right, so now it's time for testimony against the proposal. Do we have anybody signed up?
We do not have anyone signed up, and I do not see any hands up.
All right, so then, is there any neutral? Yes, I just heard somebody.
I, this is Joy, I think Kelly raised her hand.
Yep, we do have one, so Kelly, so hold on for just a moment.
All right.
Kelly, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hey there, I am neutral on this, I'm all in favor of the additional daycare and support what Sierra said. I just had some liability question, because I've worked on a lot of sidewalk litigation in 30 years, and if the city waives any sort of sidewalk requirement and something happens, does that, are we going to be liable? And maybe Chad can answer that, because you've got, if you got kids walking to school or walking home, and the city said it's okay not to have a sidewalk, and then something happens, is that going to come back on us? And that was, and that was my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad, could you answer that question, please?
Certainly, Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. The, the short answer is no. What you're deciding tonight is discretionary. You are not required, is not a requirement of the code, to have sidewalks be imposed. Rather, as Joy explained before, you're looking at conditions that you would impose to make, and I'll read you the exact language, that are found necessary to protect the best interests of the surrounding area or the city as a whole. And so you have discretion to determine what is in the, what is necessary to protect the best interests of the surrounding area or the city as a whole. And you could determine that sidewalks are necessary, or you could determine that they're not. And by using your discretion at this level, you would have something called discretionary immunity, which would protect the city from liability.
Great, thank you. So do we have any additional neutral testimony, Tammy?
I have one additional that has a hand up, and that's Marna Burns.
All right.
Marna, you need to unmute yourself, please.
Nope, still muted.
All right, I think we have it now.
There you go.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm neutral on this, but I just want to remind the city that when we had the heat wave, the city didn't seem to have any problem inviting people into that building with no, you know, using it as actually a public building to shelter people from the 117-degree weather without a sidewalk, without an easement. I understand, you know, my interest in infrastructure, I certainly understand the stormwater easement. But I'm neutral. But I'm neutral, but I just want to remind the city that, you know, you've already allowed and invited people into that building, even when it was under construction. So not sure what, where this is going in terms of holding the church's feet to the fire at this point. But that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Tammy?
I do not see any other hands up.
All right. So next is staff recap and recommendations.
Thank you. So the planning commission considered the evidence and recommended the conditions of approval. And we have heard Pastor Morris say that it's cost prohibitive. And before I lose opportunity to speak, I would like to suggest that if there is a middle ground that the city council wants to consider, maybe it's an easement for future development of a sidewalk along that stretch of Glen Echo. I did not include that in my options and I apologize for that. But that is one option that you would have to support future development along Glen Echo of a sidewalk. I don't have anything further if you, unless you guys have additional questions for me. Oh, I did also want to say that the conditional use approval is valid for one year according to the Gladstone Municipal Code. And so they would have a year to implement the development of a sidewalk and any other improvements that they are doing to facilitate the preschool and daycare use.
Any other questions for staff? Counselor Hartman?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Fields, I just want to clarify if I heard you correctly. You said that it is an option that we can kind of discuss future development of a sidewalk. So just so I can clarify that I hear you correctly, are we able to change the one year? If we wanted to have that discussion to like a two or a three year to like, we have to talk about the sidewalk in two years or we have, like, is there a way to put a timeline on that? Or can you clarify what you mean by future development and how we can hold them accountable to be a part of that sidewalk project?
Prior to the year commencing, the applicant can request an extension. I am not positive if you have the ability to extend it past a year because of the code. That would be a question for legal counsel.
So the one year timeframe is for them to build the sidewalk. If we pick the option where we want an easement for future development, that does not fall under that one year timeline.
Okay, separate thing. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Garlington?
So is there, on the GIS map, I don't have my computer in front of me to look at that. And I honestly, I did not go look at it before. Is there not an easement for a sidewalk on Glen Echo at this time?
No.
So we would need for them to grant the easement as well. Good to know. Okay, thank you.
To meet current development standards, if they construct a sidewalk, they would need to grant us an easement to cover the entire stretch of the sidewalk for future maintenance. If they, if you work with them to just grant an easement so that in the future the city can construct the sidewalk within the easement that is granted today, then that is an option to consider.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions by council for staff?
Mayor, if I could just point out that Mr. Morris has his hands up and you should also you should give him an opportunity to respond to any of the public comment as well before you close the public hearing.
Yep, that was my next line. Is there any applicant rebuttal? Pastor Morris?
So no rebuttal, just quick clarification on potential future easement for sidewalks and granting space. I guess my question would be in relationship to the other properties along Glen Echo. If, if there is a home along Glen Echo, would it also be the city's request that homes would be granting their land for the sidewalk? Or would there be some level of eminent domain that the city would exercise? Because I look at some of the homes that are on Glen Echo and if a sidewalk is five feet wide or six feet wide and then you have a three foot area for tree, you're talking about 10, 10 feet, nine to 10 feet with curbs. I look at some of those properties and they, there may not even be driveways to do that kind of work. And so I'm just, my curiosity is what would be the standard operating procedure of any municipal in that situation? And so, you know, for, for our organization to grant that space, I, I did look and I, I was just concerned about the wording of adjacent to the Tyron.
Align with.
Yeah, aligned with the Tyron sidewalk. Because again, that, it takes up a significant amount of our property. And that's, I, I just, I don't know what that process is. Again, you know, if, if there's sidewalks up and down both sides, we want to participate in that and we want to, you know, be compliant and cooperative in that whole operation. But, you know, when I think about granting easement, easement to me is access to. But then, you know, do we own it still or are we granting that land back to the city? And so if we're asked to be granting that land back to the city, is everybody else going to be asked to grant their land back to the city? And I would like to, you know, suggest that the church should be treated just as any other residential property on that, on that stretch.
I think Chad might have an answer to that. Hopefully.
Sure. Again, Mayor and Council Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. So the way the process typically works is twofold. One is when entities come in to develop their property, they may, as a condition of that development, be required to dedicate certain amount of right of way to the city to comply with the current development standards. And so that's the scenario that the church finds itself in today when it's seeking this conditional use permit. And so that same condition would apply to any property owner, whether it's a residential property owner or a commercial property owner, any property owner who's coming in and developing their property and going through this process, they'd have to come in and meet the city standards as far as, you know, the transportation system plan and everything else that we're talking about tonight. If someone is not touching their property at all and the city desires to go ahead and improve the right of way and expand the right of way, that's when the city would go out and make offers, seek donations or at the, if they can't get compliance or people to voluntarily donate the property or sell the property, use eminent domain. So it's sort of a two path process. And the only reason you're on the one path is because you're going through this process. And any other property owner going through this process would be in the same boat.
Understood. Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
It did. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Todd?
Yeah, that just got me thinking and I was wondering if Public Works Director could, you know, chime in on this. When you're talking about a sidewalk, how, what is the width of a sidewalk and the easement that you would need in that type of a scenario? Because you said five or six feet and that seems really wide unless you have sort of that parking strip area.
So the sidewalk itself would have to be a minimum of five feet wide. That's, that's what the city standard is. In this case, there would be also the planner strip that would be involved in that. Typically, I, without looking at it, I would say a planner strip is going to be at least three feet, possibly four feet, not knowing, you know, exactly what's there. So, you know, you're looking at at least seven feet there plus you're going to have curb that's going to be involved with this as well. You know, I don't know that storm drainage necessarily would be an issue for this without looking at it. So, you know, if you take your typical right of way, it, it's going to be bounced back from there, you know, roughly there. Property line, it's going to, it's going to encroach into their area, I would say, a minimum of probably seven feet, if not more.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Would someone make that motion, please?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion was made to close the public hearing by Counselor Hartman and seconded by Counselor Alexander. Do we have any additional discussion? No. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Hartman?
Aye.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Mayor Stimple?
Yes. The public hearing was closed at 7:50 PM on January 11th, 2022. So counsel, is there any discussion? Counselor Alexander?
None.
Counselor Hartman?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the Planning Commission and Ms. Fields for their time on this and everyone that took time to provide testimony as well as the Hillside Christian Church for going through this process. And, you know, as reviewing this agenda item, I got to be honest and say, you know, for this particular item, I had to balance my, my mother lens is having young children that understands that Cockmouth County is a childcare desert, as well as balance that with making sure we make the best decisions with the best interest in the city as a whole. And a childcare desert, if you don't know, it basically means that a community has more than three children for every state-registered single childcare slot or spot. And specifically for infants and toddlers, so that doesn't even include school age children. And just doing a quick search and knowing the available childcare that we have in the city, the state-registered, and this doesn't include in-home, we have four and that could total not even 50 spots. And so, and then you have your, you know, John Wayne, GCCF and Rivergate has after-school programs as well, but those are specifically for their enrolled students and not pre-K. And so I just wanted to, to give that data about, you know, the cost on those things and, you know, how little spots we have. And also honor the fact that they mentioned that they were trying to be subsidized in a way to offer affordable childcare where an infant can, infant childcare can cost anywhere, you know, from 13 to $1,500 a month. And if you have more than one kid, you know, you're spending upwards of two grand, another mortgage, if you will. And so, you know, in my opinion, I really want to try our best to remove barriers for our working families, especially coming out of COVID or hopefully coming out of COVID soon. And, and so I, and I just want to state for the record as well, for the public that is watching, I did email Administrator Beth yesterday about information about the O dot S R T S. And what that is, is the Safe Routes to School Rapid Response Infrastructure Grant Program, not full. But basically what it is, is it is a program that we can explore that funds infrastructure projects that are eligible for safe routes to school. And the, the one side of it is, is it was, there's a 40% match that we would have to provide in addition. And so the Hillside Christian Church would have to do the 60%. So I just wanted to state that, that there is an option. I know that is not, that I don't believe that it was discussed within Planning Commission, nor obviously has been discussed amongst us or within our packet. But I just wanted to let everyone know, watching, you know, in my opinion, I would really like us to, to help get this very much needed service for our working families in this community. So thank you for your time.
Counselor Todd?
Counselor Hartman really sort of touched on a lot of things that I had found out as well. I, I had no idea that St. Stephen's Lutheran Church, their preschool closed last spring. I was, me and my children were alumni from that school and they, they served about, sometimes up to 75 kids. And the YMCA at the corner of Las Fertes and Webster also is permanently closed. Sunshine Preschool on Caldwell, permanently closed as of now. And I reached out to Tammy Tracy with the school district and they have, I think she said about 50 students that they, they have, 50 to 70, I think. And they have a 40-person wait list right now. So I would like to do whatever we can. I also, I understand why we need to have these infrastructure in place, but I would like to do something that, that would help this situation from involved. So that's why I'm just out right now.
Counselor Ripley?
I have no questions.
Counselor Garlington?
So I just have a couple of things. I, I had sent Counselor Hartman a note back saying that I was in total agreement with the Safe Routes to Schools. How that actually comes about financially, you know, that's another discussion, another day, I suppose. And I would, I want to see this get off the ground. I, you know, daycare is a struggle. As, as a working mom is a struggle anyway. And right now it's an emergency for a lot of families. So here's two things. One, I'd like to see the city of Gladstone put a sidewalk from Portland Avenue up to oat field road, which I have been pinging for, for, oh, I don't know, 25 years now. And the second thing is I'd like to see the daycare center, the church, offer up an easement without too much trouble so that we can get that in there. Because I think that there could potentially be kids that walk from the high school and stop by your daycare and pick up a sibling and move on. And I think that it's really important as Counselor Alexander had mentioned, safety is of the utmost importance. It doesn't, we don't have to have a sidewalk on both sides of that street, but there needs to be a sidewalk, bottom line. And we've needed it for a long time. So without being on my soapbox too darn long, I'd like to say yes to this plan. And I'd like to see the city of Gladstone pony up for the sidewalks. And I'd like to see those sidewalks happen sooner than later, which I've been asking for, for a while. The only other thing I wanted to ask was, it said something in here about 50 kids. And I was wondering if that could ever grow. I should have asked that before. My apologies. You don't have to answer that. I appreciate the children you are planning to service. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tracy?
I'm going to echo a lot of the other counselors with regard to the sidewalk. And I agree with Counselor Garlington. I think that road is probably long overdue for a sidewalk. But I think we'd be remiss if we didn't bring up the speed limit on the road. And I guess I would probably ask this question to the Public Works Director. Does this daycare qualify as a school so that would be a school zone and reduce speed to 20 miles an hour in that stretch, Darren? Or is there something else that has to happen there for that to be accomplished? I know that Citizen Coy wrote in and this was a concern of hers. I agree, especially if we're talking about 50 preschoolers. Because much as, you know, being a father, when you have a four-year-old running from you, it's the fastest thing on the planet. Beats a cheetah pretty quickly. So I'm just curious about that, Darren, if you could answer the question. I don't know what, how this qualifies with a daycare and whether or not that could be a school zone. But I know that that's a concern of her citizens as well.
Yeah, so it's at our discretion to, to designate school zones within the city. This could definitely be qualified as a school zone. And that is something that we're looking into with this. Once, once it went through the process, we started looking into it. We, we don't have 100%, you know, for sure that that's going to happen, but it, ultimately the school zone is at our discretion. So this could definitely qualify for that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I think it would probably provide some of the traffic calming that seems to be needed there. I'm going to guess that if I'm not mistaken, I know the Chief Spurber, I don't know if he's on the call, but if I'm not mistaken, if you receive a speeding ticket in the school zone, it's a different infraction than just speeding down the highway 10 miles over the speed limit. So that actually helps us start the discussion regarding safety. So I appreciate the answer. Thank you, Darren.
Counselor Todd and Garlington may remember this, but I think when it was Grace Christian, it was a school zone, wasn't it? Yeah, so it was before. Um, what I have to say is that we've been talking about a sidewalk there for a really long time. When we redid the transportation system plan, we made sure that that full sidewalk was included in the plan so that if funding opportunities came up, we already had it vetted and that it would be easier to go after these grants. There's going to be a lot of infrastructure money coming. I got a call last night from our Senator. There's some. There's, uh, some miraculous big pot of money right now that's in ways and means that they're looking to spend. And so I talked to him this morning again, and this could be a qualifier. As Counselor Hartman said, using it as a Safe Routes to School project would be a huge plus for this and that it's, um, servicing the childcare needs. So I'm confident that we would be able to get funding for this. And I'm, I'm, I'm not so happy about doing it piecemeal. Because if you go up Glen Echo, you're going to find that every sidewalk is different, every little piece of it. There's no consistency, there's, um, lack of design and function. So if we're going to do this project, we need to do it right and we need to do the whole thing. So, um, I would like to see us not require the sidewalks at this time, but instead do this as a full project and go after these grants. Um, Pastor Morris has his hand up.
I'm unmuted, okay. I, I just would like to say something about the speed coming down Glen Echo. First of all, I'd like to thank the city or, uh, whomever it was that put the, uh, digital read on your speed coming down the street. Uh, because we've noticed that cars are driving slower as a result of that. I also, if, uh, if Chief Schmerber is on, uh, and is able to hear, first of all, uh, we got to participate in the Christmas dinner, uh, for the officers and their wives and families. And so what a delight to be able to serve such a fine, uh, fine group of men and women who serve Gladstone so well. And congratulations on the two new officers that have joined. I know that our property is often utilized by the officers of the Gladstone Police Department. And oftentimes, they may be sitting in the property, uh, at one of our exits waiting for perpetrators that are speeding down Glen Echo. So, uh, wherever the decision was made to put the digital readout in front of the home, almost directly across the street from our property, what a great move that was. And traffic has, at least while we're there, we notice that traffic is moving slower. So thank you.
Wonderful. Yes, Counselor Garlington.
I just want to make sure that as we're talking about wrapping this up, that we have, um, answered the easement, the easement, uh, not easement. Uh, what was it, I, we're, the other, the storm drain. Um, I, I'm not even sure how to word that. So maybe some help from, uh, Mr. Jacobs or Mr. Canoparoli before we, so that we can tie that in, um, as that was a concern from the get-go as well.
So how would you like that worded?
I, uh, think if you look at option number two, it's deviate from the Planning Commission's approval and allow the property at 6460 Glen Echo Avenue to be used for a daycare and preschool to serve a total of 50 children without installing a sidewalk along Glen Echo Avenue, but require them to provide the 15-foot storm drainage easement in coordination with the Public Works Department.
Okay, I see where you're at, bottom of 63, okay.
There we go. Okay, got it. All right, any other questions or would somebody like to make a motion?
I will make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we approve application Z 0483 dash 21 dash C uh, with option two, to deviate from the Planning Commission's approval and allow the property at 6460 Glen Echo Avenue to be used for a daycare and preschool to serve a total of 50 children without installing a sidewalk along Glen Echo Avenue, but require them to provide the 15-foot storm drainage easement in coordination with the Public Works Department.
Do I have a second? All right, motion was made by Counselor Garlington and seconded by Counselor Hartman. Do we have any further discussion?
Can I ask one more question, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Was, was the, the larger playground that Ms. Fields asked for included in this over here?
That was, that was a special condition of approval that was not appealed.
Okay.
The applicant did not request it to be changed.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hartman.
Aye.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Aye.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, so option number two for application file number Z 0483 dash 21 dash C has been approved. Thank you very much. This just brings me back to the planning days.
Thank you, council members, we appreciate it. Counselor Garlington, I would like to say yes on increasing by 50. And I would also suggest that when the plan comes through for easement, uh, of sidewalks, we will be as cooperative as all in, in the community. So I'm sure the land will be there and we will work, uh, together. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now I remember why we had meetings that went on till midnight.
Right. Mayor, can we take a five-minute recess real fast?
Yeah, that's okay. So we'll be back at 8:11 PM.
Tammy?
Yes, Joy.
I don't believe I'm needed anymore.
You are not.
So I will leave. Um, thank you for letting me be a co-host.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, it's 8:11, so we'll continue on with the meeting. Next is item number seven, which is the 2021 Year in Review and the 2022 Annual Work Plan, staff.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. What you have in your packet tonight is a review of the work that all of your departments and management team did in 2021. The City Council adopts goals. And in March of 2021, the City Council adopted goals for the years 2021 and 2022. So a copy of the goals are included in the packet. And this is how staff prioritizes their workload for the year and how the city allocates resources to projects. We have, uh, done an incredibly a lot in the last year. And in the packet, what you will find is updates to the City Council goals, primarily when we talk about facilities and returning to pre-COVID operations citywide, affordable housing and redevelopment, parks, um, securing resources to support the Gladstone City Parks, our facilities. Uh, this year, we talked about the Public Works Facility Upgrade to meet critical facility requirements and to support our increased demands and staff needs. And also to sustain current service levels in the Gladstone Fire Department and its ability to meet standard of cover objectives. I'm not going to go through every item in the packet tonight, but this is accountability to the public on what the city has been doing. And I think that the City Council and the management team should be commended for an incredible amount of achievements that we had, given that we're going into year two of a pandemic. As you will see, uh, two ballot measures passed this past year. And so staff is going to be focusing on the Public Works Facility Upgrade. And we've retained a project manager and will complete project setup and organization by this spring. And then we will be bringing back borrowing and financing documents to the City Council also in the spring. We are going to move forward with a progressive design build selection, which was the same that we did for the Gladstone Civic Center project. And we're hoping to have the project complete by September of 2023. Our charter was passed also at the ballot measure in November. And it goes into effect on January 15th. Once it's been codified, we will update the city's website and provide copies to the City Council. So you have the new charter that is there. And also with the Fire Department, we're going to be spending a great deal of our time focusing on different levels of service and different options for us to continue to meet our standards of cover objectives that we have. What you're going to find as you go through this report is, in addition to adopted City Council goals, you are going to find department goals specific to Public Works, to the Senior Center, to the Fire Department, to the Police Department, to finance and to administration. We have a IT Management Department and we have a Court Administrator. What we tried to do is to be very transparent with where we will be spending our time focusing on projects for this next year. If the City Council has any questions, uh, we are available to answer them for you. But really, this was an opportunity to highlight our successes from the last year and to show you how much more work we have to do in this next year. And we're poised and we're ready to do that. So with that, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Um, we'll start with, the pictures keep moving around, so I'm sorry if I mess, mix up how I'm calling on you. Um, Counselor Todd, you're first.
Um, I have no questions right now. Lots of good work done, thank you.
Counselor Alexander.
No, I agree, did a lot of good work, no question.
Counselor Hartman.
Same as the previous two, thank you for all your hard work, no question.
Counselor Garlington.
Uh, ditto here, thank you, thank you, thank you for everything, I appreciate it.
Counselor Ripley.
I have no questions.
And Counselor Tracy.
No questions, but again, uh, echoing the other counselors, I commend, uh, you and the staff, Jackie, with all the work that's been done, it's quite impressive when you look at it in detail, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a lot, seeing it on paper, all in red, that's, it's pretty impactful. Um, all right, so you don't need a motion or anything from us, you just want our...
Just the report to council and to the community.
All right, thank you very, very much. Um, next is item number eight, appointments to city commissions, boards, and committees for 2022. We have two applications for two vacant terms on the Traffic Safety Advisory Board. And then we have one application for one vacant term on the Senior Center Advisory Board, staff.
So just to expand on that introduction a little bit, Mindy Prosky applied for the Traffic Safety Advisory Board and said that if she was not appointed to that board, then she would like to be considered for the Senior Center Advisory Board, but she's not interested in serving on both at this time. So depending on what you do with this first item, the second item may be a moot point. So you do have two applicants and we also have two vacancies. One expires at the end of 2022 and the other at the, uh, 2024, the end of 2024. So our city recorder is going to ask each of you who you would like to appoint to the Traffic Safety Advisory Board.
Well, quite a quick question, on the Senior Center Advisory Board, do they just meet quarterly like they used to? Or they're meeting more often?
I believe they're meeting quarterly, but that could change now that we have a new Community Services Director there.
Okay, because I was hoping that maybe Mindy might change her mind if she realizes it's just once every three months. But if we're gonna do it more often, then that doesn't matter. All right, go ahead, Tammy.
Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, we'll start with Counselor Ripley.
Um, yes to both.
And do you have a, uh, needing to know who for the expiration date of 2022 and who for 2024?
Uh, the order they're in.
Counselor Alexander.
Same thing, yes, just on Prosky, yes on Lemon, in that order. Thank you.
Counselor Tracy.
Same, yes, yes, in same order.
Counselor Hartman.
We had actually the opposite, I had yes, yes, and Prosky on 2024 and Lemon on 2022.
Counselor Todd.
Well, I'm gonna sound like a weirdo here. Um, but, um, knowing, uh, Mindy Prosky for probably 40-plus years and knowing her skillset, I really think she'll be great on the Senior Center Board, actually. So Lemon and let's do 2024.
So that's a no for Prosky, is that correct?
Right, because she doesn't want to serve on both, that's, yeah, okay.
Unless somebody can talk her into it.
Well.
Counselor, Counselor Garlington.
Um, okay, so I'd like to go, Prosky, yes, Lemon, yes. Okay, so I'd like to go, Prosky, yes, Lemon, yes. And then the same as Counselor Hartman. And Counselor Todd, maybe you could talk her into that.
Okay, and Mayor Stempel. Yes, yes, Prosky, Lemon.
Hey.
All right, so it looks like we have Ms. Prosky for the 2022 expiration and Mr. Lemon for the 2024. Correct. All right, well, and somebody talk her into the Senior Center. There's a, it's a good time to be on it because they are movers and shakers. It is the best time.
Yeah, I believe she just got her degree like a year ago in sociology and she's just, she's an incredible person. So I will be talking to you, Mindy, if you're watching.
Yeah, oh, I said, yes.
Not you, the other one.
Because I'm on the senior board too, and that is, we do only meet, you know, every other month or so. But they're just a wonderful group of people. And then getting to meet with the foundation as well. There's just so many awesome things going on and so many great ideas that it's just really a great group to get to know. So talk her into it.
And it's the time to create a community center instead of it just being same old, same old. I mean, it is, it is an amazing time. All right, so then we're not going to vote on the Senior Center Advisory Board unless we want to just nominate her and then say, oh, I'm so sorry, we didn't get that memo.
Mayor, her hand is actually raised.
Hold on just a moment. Thank you.
But I think there's a lot of people on the call today, if anyone's watching. We have fun, right?
Hi, everyone. This is Mindy Prosky here. Well, thank you so much. If I am appointed to the Traffic and Safety Board just through the end of '22, then I really don't see why I wouldn't be able to do both.
Awesome.
You could do it, Mindy. This is really, this is, no, no, I know you're busy and I know you have a full life, but I-
Right, yeah, but I mean, I, I'm really glad that I was, I was watching because I, I think maybe I didn't realize that one appointment was really just through the end of this calendar year. So put me down for both.
Awesome. And then Traffic Safety isn't meeting every month either. Counsel Ripley, is that correct? I mean, they go months without meeting. Or Jackie, they're not meeting every month.
They meet every other month.
Every other month, so.
Sounds great. I'm thrilled to be able to do both. And I really am very much looking forward to working at the Senior Center and really seeing how it's going to evolve. It's very exciting.
It's gonna be amazing. So let's make it formal. And Tammy Bannick, you want to throw up the-
All right, thank you.
Oh, one, one thing, Mindy, did you realize that they meet kind of during the day? They're in-
Like at three o'clock?
Yeah.
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, good.
Yep, I work at home 100% of the time now and I'm just behind the high school, so it'll give me an excuse to walk somewhere. You know, some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna do a verbal roll call for appointing Mindy Prosky to the Senior Center Advisory Board.
Perfect.
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counsel Alexander?
Yes.
Counsel Tracy?
Aye.
Counsel Hartman?
Aye.
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Garland?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes, wonderful. I'm so glad she was listening. Didn't take a lot of arm twisting. That's great. All right, so the next item is number nine, which is the City Administrator Employment Agreement. And we didn't get copies of that in our packet, so do we have a staff to make, to talk about this one? Probably Chad?
Yes. Mayor and counsel again for the record, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. So tonight you have before you a question of whether and to what extent that you want to increase the city managers, or excuse me, city administrators' salary. Under your agreement with the city administrator, you have an obligation on an annual basis to consider an increase in her salary in an amount that is given to the city's other management employees. This would be in addition to the cost of living adjustment that the city manager, the city administrator receives in accordance with all other non-represented city employees. And that usually happens at the, at the beginning of the fiscal year in July. So this is the other time of the year where you look at just whether or not an annual increase is necessary or warranted. And the way it's worked in the past, based on this language, is you're supposed to compare it to the, the way the other city management employees receive salary increases. The way that works in the city is that until they reach their maximum level, city management employees are able to get something called a step increase. And that's an annual step increase that occurs, which basically results in a 5% raise for the employees. So basically what's before you tonight is, and it can be any amount or no amount, but at a minimum, you should be considering whether or not to give the city administrator at least a 5% raise. Again, you don't have to give her anything. You can give her more than 5%, which is what you did last year. You can give her less than 5%. It's, it's completely up to you. But it's an obligation that you consider this on an annual basis in the contract, which is why we have it before you tonight. I believe the city's HR Director, Ms. McDonald, has provided you some additional information via email. I'm happy to go over that or answer, answer any other questions that you may have. But now's the time for you to sort of just generally engage in that discussion.
So COLA this year is 3%. Is that correct?
COLA this previous July was 3%. Management employees are usually linked to the Ask Me Collective Party Agreement, and that expires on June 30th, 2022. So we'll have a new cost of living number in the new contract. So we don't know quite yet what this July's cost of living increase will be.
Okay. And then the step increase is for five years, the first five years of their contract, is that correct? Of the department heads?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right, Counselor Todd, questions or concerns?
I wanted to thank HR Consultant, Nancy McDonald, I believe it's consultant. She answered a lot of the questions in her, her email to us. You know, this, this year, the Consumer Price Index is about 6%, which is the, I think it's 5.9 something, which is the most that it's ever been. So, you know, people who are receiving different benefits or whatever that has gone up a significant amount. So this year was, was a bit more. And so I was, I was glad to see her, you know, give us some numbers on that. I also want to acknowledge and congratulate City Administrator Beth for her new master's degree that she just got from, which school was it? Northwestern? Northwestern, which, you know, really is something that we should think about when we're considering this step or increase. And also keeping her in parity with her, I don't know if I want to say subordinate, but you know, the fact that she does manage everybody, essentially. So, and having like the police chief, who was her second when she's gone, how close that they are. So I really wanted to thank Nancy Donald for that and answered a lot of my questions, so I don't have any. Just wanted to make some statements.
Counsel Alexander.
No questions.
Counsel Hartman.
No questions, thank you.
Counsel Garland.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Counsel Tracy.
No questions, thank you, Mayor.
Counsel Ripley.
No questions.
Well, that was an easy one. All right, would somebody like to make a motion then?
Mayor, point of order. So we, we're actually talking about a number here, is that correct?
Yes. If somebody would like to make a motion with the number.
Thank you. I'm gonna go make a motion with at least the 5%.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second the 5%.
All right, we have a motion for 5% increase by Counsel Tracy and second by Counsel Garland. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see anything. All right, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Todd?
Yes.
Counsel Garland?
Oh, yes.
Counsel Ripley?
Yes.
Counsel Alexander?
Yes.
Counsel Tracy?
Yes.
Counsel Hartman?
Aye.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes. All right, that was quick. Awesome. Thank you very much. So do you need anything else from us on this one? Nope.
No, no, Mayor, thank you. We'll, we'll draft an amendment for you and the city administrator to sign.
Okay, great, thank you. Next is Business Carried Forward. Do we have anything?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right, next is Business from the Audience. And just as a reminder that the speakers have three minutes, and I believe there's five people signed up. Could you call them up, Tammy, please? First is Ciara Cook.
Hello, Counsel, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm speaking tonight to express my strong support for Council President Matt Tracy and my concerns about the lack of professionalism from some members of this council. My support for Council President Tracy is as he refuses to be bullied and intimidated by the mayor and her voting block on council. I appreciate Council President Tracy's measured, calm presence, the fact that he listens to all citizens and is present for the community. Council President Tracy physically shows up to be present for the community. When the mayor makes personal attacks on members of her own council, she is not speaking for the citizens of Gladstone. The bullying and intimidation tactics that are being used against Matt Tracy are not those of a reasonable person who disagrees with the views of another, but are instead spiteful, personal, and inappropriate in a professional setting, and certainly from a public servant. Council President Tracy, I am thankful for the work that you do for the city. Thank you for the personal sacrifices that you have made. Continue to serve the city in such a toxic environment. On a similar note, I'd like to express my concerns at the unprofessional behavior of some members of this council. I want to make it clear, when you make shady personal attacks on other members of the council, you are not speaking for me. You did not get elected to make personal attacks on other counselors, sow division, and make the rest of the council sit through a 30-minute filibuster on how smart you are. Please knock it off. I also have a question for the mayor and council members. Your agenda, the reason you ran for office, your vision for Gladstone, are you getting it done? Are you proud of how Gladstone City Council is showing up right now? Are you listening to the voices of all of your citizens or just the ones that look like you, the ones you played pickleball with and went to high school with? I'm asking you to listen to all of your constituents thoroughly before making a decision that affects their lives. I'm also asking this mayor and council to commit to professionalism in 2022. If you cannot do that, you should consider submitting your resignation. Gladstone deserves better than the unprofessional and inappropriate attacks by certain members of this council, especially the outrageous personal attacks made on Council President Tracy and Counselor Hartman. Counsel Alexander said during the last meeting that there is a silent majority that he talks to when he's gathering signatures. Counsel Alexander, I think you missed understanding who you represent. Citizens of Gladstone are not fully represented by your high school buddies or who you play pickleball with. Gladstone is growing increasingly diverse. This last election, some council candidates ran on a platform of representing the real Gladstone, who just so happened to look a lot like themselves. They used coded language to talk about the direction they don't want to see the, the city move to, people from Portland. People from Portland is code for people who are younger, not white or queer. Some members of this council are laboring under the impression that they represent the real Gladstone and are picking and choosing which constituents they listen to. They're picking and choosing whose voice matters. When Counsel Alexander says that he speaks for the silent majority, he's defining whose voice he thinks matters in Gladstone and who he intends to serve. He thinks that because the people he likes approve of the intimidation and bullying tactics of the mayor, he speaks for the people who really matter. Luckily, this council doesn't get to decide who matters in Gladstone. Please do better.
Next is Tracy Hill.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm happy to see that Counsel Tracy has rescinded his resignation and is back on the council. I can only imagine the anguish Counsel Tracy must have felt in making that decision to walk away from his position despite the abuse and mudslinging he had to endure the past couple of years. Has had to. Matt has worked tirelessly to move this city forward in progress. He has tried to be as inclusive as possible from what I've seen. He made a mistake, Mayor, and immediately rectified it by apologizing, which is definitely more than I can say for you. If I've ever heard the words "sorry" or "I apologize" coming out of your mouth, I immediately dismissed it due to your less-than-trust-worthy past. The City Council meeting held December 14th, 2021 was a complete mess. Regardless of Counselor Ripley's heritage, he presents as a white male, and that's how the world sees him, whether he likes it or not. He cannot simply state that he doesn't have white privilege. That's not how any of this works. And seriously, did you actually say half-breed? You need to apologize immediately to Counsel Hartman as well as to the rest of the council. I highly recommend educating yourself, Mr. Ripley. When you are a pub, public figure, you can't say and do anything you want. Counselor Tracy Todd, thank you for taking a stand and removing yourself from the meeting when Mr. Ripley blathered on and on about something highly offensive in which he knows nothing about. That took courage, and I commend you for doing so. As long, as a longtime Gladstone resident, I was happy to see we were making some movement towards progress in our tiny, yet beautiful city. I see that some of you want to remain uneducated and stay stuck in your white supremacist thinking. Although these may be trigger words for some of you, they are honest and real. We won't stop fighting for progress in Gladstone. Get used to it. Thank you.
Next is Marna Barnes.
Am I up?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. Hi, guys, Marna Barnes, City of Gladstone. I have a lot to say, and I'm gonna talk fast, so listen up. It is so uncool when politicians use underhanded Machiavellian tactics to force their personal agendas onto the resident. We elect you to attend to the people's business, not push your own private curriculum. With that in mind, what was the underlying motivation that led Tammy et al. to try to embarrass Matt Tracy as stated in the recent investigation report? Was it to try to shut down Matt's legitimately elected representation of the people? If that's the case, then Tammy was in effect attempting to silence all the citizens who rely on Matt to give voice to their interests that don't align with Tammy's goals. This is a large demographic of our citizenry whom it appears to me Tammy is anxious to silence. In my view, this is a strong-arm tactic to get her own way and push her own agenda, the very definition of bullying. If, as preposterously claimed, releasing the information was to defend Jackie because the City Council refused to take action, that doesn't hold water either. When one considers that Jackie asked them not to take any further action and not to release that confidential and protected information, every city manager knows that conversations between council members and city managers sometimes go sideways. Jackie knows the realities of the job, so of course she wanted to keep this incident under wraps. It can affect her future career if someone were to twist and exploit it, which in my opinion is exactly what happened. Going forward, any city council that interviews Jackie for a future position may not realize that Jackie was, in my view, caught in the crossfire of a trashy, sleazy smear campaign by our mayor against a fellow counselor. All the other counselors honored Jackie's request to put this incident to rest except for whomever released the documents. And the investigation narrowed that down to just a few likely perps who, for some ill-conceived and in my opinion malevolent purpose, blew it up into a big public fiasco that has now splashed all over Jackie and the rest of the community. I stand firmly with Matt Tracy. The incident was long resolved between the- The incident was long resolved between the adults in the room, and it appears to me that Tammy was trying to pour gasoline on dead embers. And to what purpose? There's simply no intelligent or plausible defense for her behavior. Matt is direct and straightforward. He speaks for all of us, not just his friends and special interest groups. You might not like what Matt has to say or even the way he says it. You might not agree with his position on things, but I've never known Matt to participate in or encourage underhanded schemes. His education and experience in political science and his master's degree in public administration have given him a clear understanding of the government's role in our lives. You always know where you stand with Matt, and he won't sic his attack dogs on you from behind the curtain. Sadly, I can't say that's the same thing about Tammy Stimple. So if we're looking for the big bully in the room, I believe we need to look at our mayor and her co-conspirators. Thank you. Bye.
Next is Linda Neese. Linda, you should be able to unmute yourself. Now, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Linda Neese, former resident of Gladstone. It saddens me to see the drama in Gladstone continue. Mayor Stimple could very easily stop all of the drama. Her leadership continues to spiral down. The bullying, intimidation continues from one counselor to the next. The MO from the mayor, Garland, Alexander, does not stop. Garland wrote very demeaning comments about me on Nextdoor. Osborne did the same, took it a step further by contacting my friends and organizations outside of Gladstone and tried to tarnish my reputation. Mayor Stimple was aware of all of this that was going on and elected to do nothing but encourage her little group to keep it up. Alexander has gone so far as to follow people around, take pictures, concerning behavior and doing the behavior from Mayor Stimple's as her, his chief, as her chief partner, especially in a private business that they are in together with. Here we are with the same tarnished comments about Counselor Matt Tracy, all because he doesn't go along with the mayor and her agenda. The situation between him and the city administrator was resolved, and it should have been let go. But no, the mayor couldn't let the opportunity, couldn't wait for the opportunity attacked a fellow council member. I totally understand why Counselor Tracy said what he did at the last meeting. You get pushed, your reputation gets tarnished, and you wonder why you're doing this, but your heart is in it, and you want what is best for the community that you live in. You can call me biased, but I know that Counselor Todd, Hartman, Tracy are in the, in the community. For, and, and I strongly feel Counselor Tracy should not step down. The people of Gladstone voted him in. He looks at the business at hand, how to move it forward. He does his research and reviews what is at hand. Where is the follow-through from the mayor and her little group on the commitment that they made as elected leaders to respect one another, city staff, community members, and to encourage collaboration? Or does this goal continue to be dominant to destroy any voice that objects to them? Mayor Stimple, who was next on your endless string of attacks? You went after Ken, Steve, me, and now Matt. Who's on the next agenda? I'm glad that you announced you won't be running again. I don't think Gladstone can survive another term with you as mayor. Thank you, Linda Neese. Next is Jerry Blakeney. Jerry, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hey there. Good evening. I wanted to thank my fellow community members who've called in, Sierra, Tracy, Marna, and Linda. I really appreciate you all stepping up. It would seem, Greg, that the majority is not silent anymore. My question to the group here is, how many people are on this Zoom for the community? Hundreds, would you say? We will never know. It's hidden. How many letters were written into the council? Thousands, Greg? I don't know. It's hidden from the council. It was reported tonight that there were no correspondence to the council, but I wrote eight letters myself, and no others writ, wrote them as well. I wrote a letter supporting and thanking Council President Matt Tracy. I'm glad he is staying, and I hope he runs for mayor. Let me scratch that. I hope he kicks the mayor's butt, and he himself has, becomes mayor. I wrote a letter condemning Counselor Alexander's wildly inappropriate speculations on Counselor Hartman's heritage. Yeah, I see that smile, Greg. I wrote a letter asking for you all to censure Counselor Ripley for his barely coherent racist comments and begged you all to limit his reports to the council in the future. Please spare us from that again. I wrote a letter to support and clarify the investigator's findings. It was a clear, clear investigation into Willie's stolen confidential personal documents. I wrote a letter asking the counselors state their sources and for Greg to stop using hyperbolic anonymous people to prop up his comments and speculations. It literally looks like a Home Alone scene when he's like holding those shadows in front of the windows just to say, "He is a good guy." I wrote a letter asking the mayor and her voting block, Counselors Garland and Alexander, to defend their voting record blocking Gladstone residents from volunteering with the city. I wrote a letter asking for you all to address how you handle your Zoom meetings. This one's a lot better, so thank you. In the past, it's been terrible, but this one's good. I wrote a letter asking about the mayor and Counselor Garland's vote to allocate funds, time, and favor to the Gladstone Pickleball Club. Look, I have no problem with pickleball, and anytime you want to join me on the court, sure, fair. But you both are paying, are paying members of the club, and I don't believe you should have voted for, at the very least, that forty-five thousand dollars to go to them. My question to Mindy is, how much sidewalks does forty-five thousand dollars pay for? I want to thank the Council President Matt Tracy and Counselors Todd and Hartman for acknowledging the letters. I wonder, why were the rest of you silent? Now, we saw the eye rolls, the head shakes, and the chuckles to your constituents' testimony, Randy, Greg, Mindy, and even the mayor who keeps her video a long ways away. Let me tell you, this is not about you. Oh, there you go, Mayor. This isn't about you. You're counselors now. You represent the community, and when they call in, when they go out of their way to give you their testimony, just pretend that it's, you're just ignoring them again. That's fine. Just move on. You either want your constituents to participate in your community, or you don't. It's not that complex or difficult. I hope you all have a wonderful evening. Thank you so much for your service. Again, I want to thank Sierra, Tracy Hill, Marna, Linda, the thousands of people who wrote in letters.
Thank you, Jerry. The three minutes is up.
All right, is that it?
No, we have one more. Jason Kelly. Jason, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Unmuted, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
All right. I'm here tonight to voice my support for Council President Tracy and City Administrator Betts, and to talk about the mayor's lack of leadership. When you, when I was looking up different traits of great leaders, I came across a great article on entrepreneur.com, the article's from November of twenty sixteen by the author Steve Toback. He writes, "In the Trouble with Divisive Leaders." He says, "Think about it. Anyone can get their friends and supporters to follow you, but strong leaders have the ability to bring their detractors on board as well. They somehow bring all the stakeholders together and unite them under a common vision. That's just what good leaders do." Well, Mayor Stimple, unfortunately, he was not writing about you. You do not do that. In fact, from the meetings I've watched and listened to this past year, you actually do the opposite. And what's sad is you've been given so many opportunities to lead, many of them are self-inflicted, but at each turn, you have failed. And the most embarrassing of all of them is that during the investigation into the leaked documents, it is reported that you wanted to use it as an opportunity to embarrass Counselor Tracy. Aren't you embarrassed by that? It's shameful. It's shameful that you would take an opportunity not to lead, but to further divide the council. But I believe that was your plan all along. Mayor, you owe Counselor Tracy and City Administrator Betts an apology for what you've put them through. There are so many more examples of your failed leadership, but we only get a few minutes to talk tonight. Do you think voters care about your personal vendettas, your dramatics, or your shenanigans? Well, let me tell you, they don't. What we care about is jobs, food on the table, access, equality, and safety. I don't recall you using any of your position this year to really advocate for any of these topics. You wouldn't, I mean, in the summer, you, the least you could have done is to make a statement about anti-racism. That was the least of it, and you couldn't even do that. It seems you're always involved in some kind of drama or scandal. On your city council profile, it says you firmly believe it takes a village to preserve our community. Well, I wouldn't want to be in any village that you are in charge of. The problem is that you've been involved for too long. I hope that you really do not run for reelection. I don't think the city deserves the drama. They need someone who will actually lead for them. You are the CEO of Gladstone, but I believe the city would be more successful under a different leader, a new CEO, someone like Council President Tracy, who has a proven record of betterment for the city. Mayor, you say all the right things about respect, working together for the citizens of Gladstone, but I think the quote from the great American writer and activist James Baldwin sums it up perfectly. He says, "I can't believe what you say because I see what you do." Thank you.
All right, next is business from the council, so we'll start with Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say that I've spent the last month in very personal self-reflection, and it was a difficult month for a lot of reasons. And I'm just choosing to spend my last twelve months of my term in council in positive community pursuits. Glad and Gladstone, I, I hope you'll be, all be along for the ride. But that's, that's it. That's, that's the only thing that's happening here. And I appreciate the good work we did here tonight with the agenda, and I hope we can do this more often, and thank you for the work tonight.
Right, Counsel Alexander.
Just congratulations to the new officers. I like Counselor Todd's idea, and we did get a lot of good stuff done, and hopefully we can move forward, get better. Thanks.
Counselor Hartman.
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Garland.
Um, hi. So I, too, would like to see a really good twenty twenty-two for us. I think that Gladstone has a lot to offer, and I think that we're all in a really good. I think that we can all do a lot of good for the people that want to get things done and, and help get things done and be proactive to get things done. So I welcome phone calls and emails from people moving forward and wanting to see our community be a better place, because that's what I'd like to do. Couple of things that are going on. Library had the Food for Fines. It ended December eighteenth, and Gladstone got, gave a dollar for every non-perishable item. So they got almost eleven hundred dollars. That's a lot of fines, but you know what? That's okay, because it went to a good cause. The seed library, the seed, the seeds at the library are going now, so if anybody's out there that wants to get their garden started, go get your seeds. It's at Gladstone and Oak Lodge. They're putting in a new story stroll brought to us in partnership with the Gladstone Public Library Foundation and the Friends of Gladstone Nature Park. It's called "The Snowy Day", and I'm sure that all of you have read "The Snowy Day" maybe once or twice. So it's kind of exciting, and that will be posted. It'll be English on one side and then Spanish on the other side. And then each panel this time will have an activity to do along the route of the story. So I think it's really, you know, that program is so progressive, and they see, you know, just add a little bit and a little bit each time. And I think that the more that we promote it and get people to walk through the park, you know, maybe one day we can get some really great interpretive signs down at Meldrum Bar and, again, have more educational opportunities for kids down there. So Saturday, January twenty-ninth, the Oak Lodge Water Services is holding a conversation about moving towards, forward, or toward an authority, I'm sorry. So I know I spoke up on that, and so I want to make sure that the people that are listening, that are part of that, know that I will do my best to make sure that your water bills include letters that are, that have to do with that, if that is something that's going on with your particular address. I don't want anybody to think they're getting left behind, again, beings that it is their biggest, their home is their biggest asset. I want to make sure that they know exactly what's going on with their utilities on that. The Senior Center had a holiday party on the twenty-third of December. It was very well-attended. We had a lot of volunteers as well. It was a lot of fun. So many people did, I can't even begin to tell you how many people showed up to do some really amazing, playing piano, giving gifts away. They had raffle tickets, raffle prizes. People had crocheted and knitted blankets for people for gifts and all sorts of just really fun stuff. It was a great, great time, and I just can't thank the Senior Center folks enough for putting all of that together. Showing up to volunteer was the easy part, so. But just to see the smiling faces was so special during the holiday season this year. You know, everybody has, you know, made mention that it's been, you know, a rough couple of years. So to see the people together and the smiling faces, it was just a great, great thing. And then the Senior Center is putting together a, a class beginning February sixteenth. It's from six to seven-thirty in the evening. It's, I believe it said it was a three-part series, and it's Alzheimer's education courses. And the way that it was written up that I read, it's for caregivers and people that are affected by families dealing with Alzheimer's. And for anybody that's dealt with that, and I'm not trying to dismiss anything, but I want to say, add a little bit of dementia in there also. I think it's really important to understand the role of a support system, and the Senior Center has that. And I want people to know that they can reach out to the Senior Center, and this could be a very, very good supportive class for your family if you need it. So pick up the phone and call. Please just reach out, because Gladstone is here to help. And, and if that phone call could put you in touch with somebody that could make your day a little bit easier, that, that's what we want to strive for. So with that, a very happy two thousand twenty-two to everyone, and that's all. Thank you. Have a good night.
So one quick thing, Jackie.
Yes.
I, I talked to Jackie about getting Oak Lodge Water Services in to do a quick presentation to us, because there's misunderstanding on exactly how we forward on their charges. Have, are we going to be doing that sometime soon?
We met with management today to talk about getting some talking points and some FAQs from Oak Lodge Services, and so we are moving forward, but I'm not sure it's going to be in an actual presentation at a council meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, Counsel Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had intended originally to read my withdrawing, resignation, verbal resignation intent letter. I don't see a need to. It was posted in social media, apparently, and it's been shared through the clackens review. What I think that I'd like to What I think that I'd like to do is just point out that, you know, that we sit here and are able to move along a fairly difficult agenda today with some fairly emotionally, not charged, but you know, an emotional appeal from a church that wants to put together a daycare. We all seem to be kind of working together on all of these issues. And I can't help but think that pretty much everything I've endured for the last two years is really personal, and that's fine. Like councillor Garlington said to us, I think one time during one of our sessions, you know, she's not going to invite me to dinner, but you know, we could do a civil nod to each other for the most part and say hi. We just need to be civil to each other. And I haven't had civility here since probably the day I walked on the council. Frankly, I, first and foremost, after that, I want to support or thank the supporters. I had an outpouring of support. I really appreciate the folks in the community that reached out to me directly, both in phone, text, and I guess emails. A lot of these folks, I don't really, I don't really know. I'm not that familiar with them, but they've been following the work that we do, and they've been following what's happened in this town. And I really appreciate the support. I think that they are the citizens that are stepping up, and some of them are new to our town. They voiced their support. I just think we need to, to put away the, the swords here and the shields and actually go on and effectively work for the next year and usher in, you know, the new folks who will be most likely running for offices. I have no intent to run myself. People say never, say never in politics, so I won't say never. But I will say that I think we need to just grow up a little bit on this council and go forward. I know I'm tired, and I know that other people, including staff, are tired. I've had staff members reach out as well. We're, we, we need to be the leaders, and we need to show the community that we can lead. It takes work and it takes practice. And I think that, you know, I will go forward and try to be as positive as I can, but I, I'm not going to be reacting the same way I have over the last two years to further personal attacks, and certainly not the besmirching of my character, nor the attempted recreation and rewriting of my history, because nobody on this council or in this community has the right to do that. And the reason that I've been able to actually weather the storm is because the people who know my character and the people who have trusted me and the people that I've worked with for 30 years in this community, I mean, in the Portland region, they know me better than what has been painted of me over the last two years. So I go on with a positive attitude. I agree with councillor Todd, and I think we all need to support each other and go forward. And this is the last time I'm going to say this in, like this, because if we continue to endure the attacks, I'm not going to be interested in being as magnanimous and congenial about it. So thank you for the time, and once again, thank you to my supporters.
Councillor Ripley.
I got nothing.
All right. I only have a couple of things. As I usually say, the food pantry is open from 3:00 to 6:00 on Thursdays at the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church off Glen Echo. We're again located in the Portables. We're looking for volunteers and donations. And I want to thank all of the people that dropped off food and the hygiene products over the holidays. Those were a huge hit. Um, I'd also like to thank the Toy and Food Drive folks. So many people donated toys and food to the Toy and Food Drive that they had way too much, and they brought it all over to the food pantry. So everybody that came through the two weeks before Christmas was able to walk out with four or five gifts. It was wonderful. Um, big, huge surprise to all of them, made a lot of people's Christmas brighter. Um, if you'd like to volunteer, drop off donations, I can get you Alex's contact information. The prep crew is there on Wednesdays from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. So we're always there during that time to accept donations. The Parks and Rec Board meeting last night went over the status of the Meldrum Bar site, site plan. The stakeholders meetings have started, but unfortunately, there's a few groups that are not participating that we were hoping. That would be the golf course people, the RC car, and the steel headers. They had multiple opportunities to attend meetings, and staff went out of their way to reach out, and none of them showed up. Um, Darren gave an update on winter maintenance and the vandalism, which is on the increase, and that's why the bathrooms are shut down. The wayfinding signs, the entry sign in Meldrum Bar is really small, so that's going to be, that's going to get bigger. And let us know that the sports user free fee group meeting is scheduled for January 24th. So that's moving forward. Um, the board is looking at standardizing picnic tables, benches, and trash receptacle system wide, and they spent time looking at options. Stephanie is going to create a survey to hopefully narrow down the options. They're looking at a boots-on-the-ground survey for the Robin Hood Park to let the neighbors know what the board is working on and what their ideas are for the improvements. And they want to know what the community wants to see. They're hoping to do then the door knocking on a Saturday coming up fairly soon from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. Regarding the RC car group and their use of the park, there is an assumption that this group just showed up one day and just took over and started digging and moving dirt around, and that is not the case. Um, in late of 2009, the group came before city council, and they were given permission to have an RC car track there, and they were asked to relocate to where they are now. So they were someplace else in the park, and they were asked to move there. So hopefully throughout this, these conversations with the stakeholders groups, they can kind of figure out what, what that's going to look like moving forward. Hopefully, they'll come to one of the meetings. Um, the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, also called C4, the focus is on transit and trying to find the best way to keep that topic moving. Aside from I-205, everything transit related in Clackamas County is going to be impacted by 205. But there's a whole lot of little conversations that are going on. Specifically, they want to, we, we want to make sure that efficiencies are addressed, provide a complete system. We want to make sure those last mile connections are addressed and that there's better awareness for people on where they can access transit. Clackamas County pays a significant amount of money into the regional transit system, but we have the most transit deserts. There's a lot of areas, mostly because we're a lot of rural, that we don't have transit at all. So that needs to be addressed. There's a lot of infrastructure funding streams coming up, but no one really knows what that's going to look like yet. We're probably not going to know until the middle of summer. So it's important that we come up with some plans, some projects that are ready to go as soon as that money is released and what their parameters requirements are. That's all I have. So would somebody make a motion to adjourn, please?
So, so moved.
A second?
Second.
Motion was made by councillor Tracy and seconded by councillor Garlington to adjourn the meeting. Do we have any questions or concerns? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote?
Councillor Garlington.
Yes.
Councillor Ripley.
Yes.
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Tracy.
Yes.
Councillor Hartman.
Hi.
Councillor Todd.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, meeting is adjourned at 9:08 PM. Thank you, everybody.